Welcome to the Murfreesboro City Council Meeting. It's March 27, 2025. Councilmember Sean Wright has our prayer and our pledge.
Heavenly Father, thank you for all the blessings you bestow on us, not just locally, nationally, statewide also. Please be with those that have prayers, that are spoken and unspoken, Lord. It's your name I pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Man, do we have anyone signed up for comment tonight?
I did have one person signed up, Mr. Matt Taylor.
Okay. Mr. Taylor, is Mr. Taylor here?
No, he's not here.
Okay, all right.
I was gonna comment on the Kentucky game coming up on Friday.
Yeah. All right, we'll move to the consent agenda. You have 11 items on your consent agenda. Anything that needs to be pulled off for discussion? If not, we'll take a motion.
Move for approval. Second?
Motion, motions and seconds. Please call the roll.
Ms. Abrewater?
Aye.
Ms. Gales Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Maxwell?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye. We'll move to new business. You have Resolution 25R04. This is a school budget amendment number seven. Director Duke?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. The city schools is seeking approval for an amendment to our FY25 general purpose budget. These amendments were approved by the city school board in February. They include additional interest revenue of $34,725, which will be used to offset board fees and benefits, an additional $3,500 in revenues from donations and gifts, which will support our weekend food backpack program and our indigent children's care fund, an additional state revenue of $121,766 associated with our special education programming. The amendment also includes recognizing $10,956 donation from the city schools foundation for our mobile resource fan. And finally, we are recommending transferring $3.1 million from unassigned fund balance to be used for a portion of the purchase of our new transportation and maintenance facility, which will be combined with other approved funding to make up the total $5.25 million purchase price. And I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions for Trey?
So moved.
Second.
Motion second, please call the roll.
Ms. Abrewater?
Aye.
Ms. Gales Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Maxwell?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye. All right, we'll move to ordinance change, an ordinance change. Murfreesboro Cable TV Structure Changes, ordinance 25008. Mr. Bozeman?
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. You have an ordinance in front of you for your consideration on first reading regarding structure changes of the Murfreesboro Cable TV. This ordinance would essentially dissolve the Cable TV Commission and change future actionable items or recommendations related to the cable TV franchise presented to the city council by city staff instead of previously by the Cable TV Commission. This was something that was previously on the city council's workshop agenda several months ago. Be happy to answer any questions you might have.
No questions. So moved.
Second.
Motion second, please call the roll.
Ms. Abrewater?
Aye.
Ms. Gales Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Maxwell?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye. Thank you. Thank you, Alan. All right, we'll move to all motion items. Item 14, Adams Tennis Complex Court Resurface Project. Mr. Beshear.
Well, first of all, I'm Mr. Beshear, Sr. I think I'm older than him.
Sorry, Russ.
We actually had a good one. I was gonna nominate him for a Stars Award. Now, I was gonna stand up and accept it and get my free day off, but...
Well, but clearly that'd be nepotism if that's your son that you're doing that for, so I apologize.
All right. The eight indoor and 16 outdoor courts at the Adams Tennis Complex need to be resurfaced. Their staff has made light repairs over the years, but resurfacing is needed to maintain the NCAA and USTA sanctioning criteria. This project consists of surface preparation, crack repair, leveling if needed, color coding, line painting, and post completion inspection for all 24 courts. This project was competitively bid and is pending legal approval of bonds and insurance. Sports Pros, Sports Surface Pros, LLC was the lowest responsible bidder, and these upgrades will provide the community a desirable and safe place to enjoy tennis. The expense, $138,600, is funded by fiscal year 25 CIP. Thank you for the opportunity to present this project for your consideration, and I'll be happy to answer any questions that you have.
Any questions?
So moved.
Second.
Motion second, please call the roll.
Ms. Abrewater?
Aye.
Ms. Gales Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Maxwell?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye. All right, we'll move to item 15, Microsoft Enterprise Agreement. Mr. Jarrett.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I.T.'s requesting a renewal of the city's enterprise agreement with Microsoft with an annual expense totaling around $430,000. This is a three-year agreement that covers licensing for city email, Microsoft 365, and Windows, and is funded out of the IT and Water Resources operating budgets with 25% of funding coming from Water Resources. Be happy to answer any questions.
So I hate to be that guy, but when I saw this, I pulled out my calculator, because I just renewed my Microsoft.
Oh, yeah.
Family plan, it was like 200 bucks, whatever it was. And so here we are at this price, 471,1300 users, that's $355 per user license. What is it that we're getting?
Sure.
Versus what I'm getting as an individual person? What's so special or different? Is it enhanced security?
A lot of it's that, yes. And so you've got, there's a lot wrapped up in it. So you have your Teams conferencing, so all of your meetings, including voice chat or your voice standard international dialing, things like that. I'm trying to think. There's the package deal, the MFA is in there, so your multi-factor authentication that also appears with third-party applications, that is wrapped up into this. So it's tied into city security as well. There's additional that, there's the archiving of all the email. We have to maintain records that are indefinite. So for all of open records, when we go back request, we've gotta pull up something that was emailed 2010, and so there's retention there as well. So, yes, and there's, I can send you over a list of the really detailed explanation of all of it, if you'd like.
That's fine. I was just kinda curious. I was like, why, why do I pay this and the city pays this?
Oh, no.
But if it's because of security enhancement and records retention?
It is, it is. And I do have MSRP pricing as well to show the contract value of it, if you'd like to check it out. And it is, yeah, it's one of those things that's hard for me to see every three years as well, but, you know, we've just, we've become so dependent on it, and it is a really good service, so.
Okay. No further questions.
Good question.
So moved.
Second.
Motion second, please call the roll.
Ms. Abrewater?
Aye.
Ms. Gales Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Maxwell?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye. All right, we'll move to item 16, the renewal of the IT managed security. Mr. Jarrett.
Yes. This is a renewal of our current cybersecurity monitoring service, which provides 24/7 threat detection and helps ensure our systems follow industry best practices. The total cost is approximately $521,000 and will be split between IT and Water Resources with 70% from IT and 30% from Water.
Any questions?
So moved.
Second.
Motion second, please call the roll.
Ms. Abrewater?
Aye.
Ms. Gales Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Maxwell?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye. Thank you, Mr. Jarrett. And Mr. Hennessy, for the record, I was looking at a memo that had Mr. Beshear's name on there, so I apologize. So even have a car with your name on the side of it, so. All right, let's move to item 17. We're gonna contract with Dixon County Equipment for the purchase of maintenance equipment. Nate?
Mr. Mayor, thank you.
You were looking like, is he gonna call me the right name?
I was just gonna see what you're, who I was gonna be tonight, but, I mean, I think, Mayor, members of council, for your consideration tonight is a contract with Dixon County Equipment to purchase the following. It's a New Holland tractor with a cradle broom, which is $156,000, and a New Holland skid steer with a 72-inch bucket, which is $55,500. These pieces of equipment are needed to properly maintain our open space in Greenway as well as other amenities within the park system. Total cost is $211,500, and funds are allocated in the fiscal year 25 CIP. I'd be glad to answer any questions you have.
Any questions for Mr. Williams?
So moved.
Second.
Motion second, please call the roll.
Ms. Abrewater?
Aye.
Ms. Gales Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Maxwell?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye. And Nate, we have a big day tomorrow. Do you wanna update everyone on what tomorrow is?
Yes, Mayor, we're excited. We're breaking ground on Veterans Park officially tomorrow, so it's 10 o'clock. Invite the public out. We'll have a very brief groundbreaking and hopefully get to work very soon on that.
Awesome.
Thank you.
All right, we'll move to item 18, Veterans Park Materials Engineering and Testing Services Task Order Number 18.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council. I'm here on behalf of staff to seek approval for Task Order Number 18 with TTL Incorporated for Materials Engineering and Testing Services during the construction of Veterans Park. This task order will ensure the project meets the highest standards of quality assurance through independent inspections and testing. The scope includes concrete form, concrete form work and steel inspections to verify strength and integrity, the backfill, paving, and geotechnical testing for material compliance and stability, masonry and steel inspections to confirm structural soundness for the structures that are to be built. TTL Incorporated, with a proven track record of reliable services for the city, will perform these services required. The $119,000 expense is covered by the fiscal year 25 CIP budget. Approving this task order supports our economic development goals, and a high-quality park enhances Murfreesboro's appeal and quality of life. I thank you for your time and can answer any questions at this time.
Thank you, Mr. Jarrett. Any questions?
If there are no questions, I'll move for approval.
Second.
Motion second, please call the roll.
Ms. Abrewater?
Aye.
Ms. Gales Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Maxwell?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye. All right, we'll move to item 19, Construction Contract for Rutherford Adaptive Signal Control Technology. Mr. Kerr.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. In 2017, council approved design contract for the Rutherford Boulevard Adaptive Project. This project is for the development and implementation of an adaptive signal technology for signals, signalized intersections on Rutherford Boulevard and Norfield Boulevard. This new technology is aimed at improving traffic flow along this major corridor. On February 11, 2025, staff conducted a bid opening and determined that SNW contracting was the lowest responsible bid in the amount of $5,106,752. In addition, we recommend awarding the contract with an allowance of an additional 5% contingency to accommodate any unforeseen requirements and ensure this project is successful completion in a timely manner. The estimated cost of this project is $5,357,752, including a 5% contingency. This expenditure is funded by federal funds in the amount of $4,864,915, and local funds in the amount of $536,127. A local portion is funded by the CIP budget and reallocated FY2022 CIP funds. We're requesting approval of the contract agreement to the lowest responsible bidder and reallocation of CIP funds from the Greenway Boulevard for the 5% contingency in the amount of $250,000. I'm available for any questions.
Why are you looking at me?
Any questions for Mr. Kerr?
So moved.
Second.
Motion second, please call the roll.
Ms. Abrewater?
Aye.
Ms. Gales Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Maxwell?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye. All right, we'll move to item 20, Addendum Number Two, Construction Administration for the Rutherford Adaptive Signal Control Project.
Thanks, Mayor. As part of the original federal procurement process, Neil Schaefer will perform construction administration services for the Rutherford Adaptive Project. These services, which are retained on most large construction projects, include development of a variety of signal timing plans as well as assist the city with administrative duties associated with the construction of the project following TDOT requirements. The estimated of these professional services for this project is $357,323, which is 100% federally funded. Available for any questions.
I think these are great, and I think anytime we can put technology to help get people around town, so be it. So I would just encourage Jim, you know, I know it's federal funds and so many of our roads are state roads. Anytime we can do this, I'm all for it, so I say move for approval.
Second.
Motion second, please call the roll.
Ms. Abrewater?
Aye.
Ms. Gales Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Maxwell?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye. Thank you. Thank you, thank you, Jim. All right, we have a contract with Dynamic Security. Mr. Hennessy.
I wanna thank Papa Brad over here for being a good sport. Good evening, Mayor and council members. Transportation Department is requesting your approval of a security contract unarmed security services at the Murfreesboro Transit Center. The transit center will be substantially complete and ready for administrative personnel sometime in May. Passenger operations will begin later, probably early July. An invitation to bid for security services was released in January. Several bids were received. After reviewing, the lowest responsible bid was Dynamic Security with a regular hourly rate of 2405 and an extended hourly rate of 3608. The base contract cost for the first year is $98,750, which is included in the department operating budget, and I'll be happy to take any questions you have.
How many total people will this fund?
I'm sorry, say...
How many total people will this?
Security guards?
Yeah, two, three, six.
It'll be, it'll be one for the entire day of operations, so there'll be two people each day, but one at one time, so.
Okay.
Any questions?
I'll move for approval.
Second.
Motion second, please call the roll.
Ms. Abrewater?
Aye.
Ms. Gales Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Maxwell?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye. All right, we'll move to the Murfreesboro Major Transportation Plan Update. Mr. Kerr.
Thank you, Mayor and council again. In 2018, the city council approved the 2040 Major Transportation Plan, which evaluated current and future transportation conditions and outlined alternative roadways and facilities based on the 2035 comprehensive study. These were organized into short-term, midterm, and long-term phases based on analysis conducted using 2014 highway network data. Given the city's significant growth over the past seven years alongside a recent update to the land use plan and the uncertainty surrounding the impact of the TDOT's Choice Lane project, staff has recognized the need to update the travel demand model to formulate future network alternatives. This update will integrate 2024 data and project a forecast year of 2050, ensuring the city's transportation infrastructure meets its evolving needs and anticipated growth. This will allow the city to address both immediate requirements and long-term growth with strategic forecasting and efficiency. This plan will also provide updated travel demand data for the Cherry Lane Corridor Study. The expensive, the cost of this project is $194,610, funded by State Street Aid, and I'm available for any question. We also have the consultants available for any questions.
Any questions?
So moved.
Second.
Motion second, please call the roll.
Ms. Abrewater?
Aye.
Ms. Gales Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Maxwell?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye. All right, we'll move to item 23, Cherry Lane Corridor Study Proposal.
I'll take that, Mayor. Good evening, council and mayor. This is a follow-up from our February council workshop meeting. It's to consider professional services for the Cherry Lane Corridor Study between Interstate 840 and Interstate 24. We've got Kevin Gunther here with Reagan Smith just to kinda go over a couple of exhibits to reacquaint you with the proposal. I believe he also has team members from Reagan Smith, and I think Neil Schaefer is also working on this project in collaboration with them. So Kevin, take it away.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Gore. Mayor McFarland, city council, city staff, good to be here this evening to talk about this project. This is something that's going to shape the city for quite some time. I don't know if there's a way we can pull up the screen here. And pleasure for us to be here and talking with you about it. I also have Brady Yarborough with Kimley Horn there, the transportation component of this plan. As mentioned, it, this goes from the east side of 840 intersection to the potential future I-24 intersection encompasses approximately 1,800 acres. And what this plan will do was, we're gonna look at several components of land use as well as transportation. So we would start by looking at an existing inventory of not only land use, existing conditions, but infrastructure, water, sewer, electric, stormwater. We'll look at grading limitations, slope limitations, and make sure to assess what's there in place. We will also consider potential development scenarios and roadway projections that have already been designed for the corridor. So we'll put those pieces of puzzle in to make sure they're being considered. And then we will be looking at transportation planning kind of in two main phases, and I'll dive into that a little bit more here with the next exhibit, but in general, the first phase will be at a high level. We'll look at the surrounding modeling from the regional network and the overall transportation plan, and then after that, we'll dive into more detailed scenario analysis of how the land use might shape different transportation models, and then actually looking at some detailed geometry for the corridor. And then we will also be looking at a detailed master plan as well as general land use categories on the east side, what's known as the Hoard Properties. We know that as we look at that master plan, there's some flexibility on exactly where the boundaries of that might shape in the area, and there's some existing development patterns that we'll consider and work in context with that plan. And then when this is all done, the goal would be to create for you an area plan that you can adopt for policy. Very important considerations for infrastructure commitments, land use policies, annexation, rezoning, that sort of thing. So I will also show you briefly what the land use, I'm sorry, what the transportation scenario would look like. If we could have the screen again. As I said, there's several layers to the transportation part of this. The first one on the left side of your screen is that large-scale demand modeling that we'll have to get from the larger modeling that's in place, and then we will also look at kind of the larger transportation network. Once we've done that, we'll sleeve that into the different development scenarios that we're proposing, and from that, we'll pick two, probably the one that has the most impact, and then an additional one to look at, really a scenario development of modeling that's more detailed, looking at interstate operations, interchange operations, and intersection operations. And from that, also looking at a road network that would fit with the development patterns we're proposing and the master plan we're proposing. So be happy to answer any questions you have, and we are pleased to have the opportunity to present this to you tonight.
I've just got one comment. There's a property over there, and I'm not making any comments about the project that's been worked on, on that property or anything like that, but there's a project that's been tied up for a while, working with city staff, working with engineering, stuff like that, and I really don't think it's fair to the property owner or the person going through the process to kinda pull the rug out from them. I would like to either see one of two things, either pull them out of the study or let that project go through the process. If it passes seven to nothing or fails seven to nothing, at least let it go through the process.
But keep it in the study? Is that what you're saying?
Whatever makes it work. Just putting it out for discussion.
I think for them to apply, they'd have to come out of the study, right?
Yeah.
Would be my fault there.
I agree with you, Sean. My view is, you know, when I was first running, one of the things, or one of the reasons I ran is just 'cause I felt like there was times where we put business owners and other entities through the wringer. And if somebody's ready to kinda pull the trigger on doing something, they've done their due diligence, I'm okay with excluding, you know, the property south of 840 and pulling that out. Go ahead and proceed with whatever needs to be done north of 840. But I just don't think that's fair to that, you know, that property owner, honestly. And I wasn't on council when the whole legacy sports thing was ongoing, and it'd be different, I guess, if we said back then, you know, hey, legacy sports, we need to do, you know, this, this, and this, but we didn't do this sort of study. So I would support that we should be trying to pull that out, exclude that, but go ahead and proceed with the rest of the study and let that developer proceed with their plan. And this isn't an endorsement of their plan by any means. It's just saying to allow the property owner to proceed with what they feel they need to do. That's my thoughts.
Well, I think it's only fair that we do that because if not, it sounds like that we were leading them on. You know, we just let them get so far in the process, and all the money they've already spent, and then to come around and just smack them in the face and say, no, we can't do that. So I just think, let's just be fair. You know, we should've let them know earlier if we were not gonna do what they thought we were gonna do. So I just want us to be fair.
Well, to be fair, I think, and I respect everyone's opinion, but I think this property owner has been told multiple times that what's being proposed on that site is against the land use study and that there's a lot of things that have changed on that property specifically over the last 90 days with TDOT. So I'm not giving an endorsement of the project one way or another, but, you know, one of the things that we are constantly criticized for is not making sure that infrastructure is in place before development occurs, or at least having the studies done for infrastructure in place before development occurs, and this is one of those cases. I hate it for the property owner. Now, I mean, I think the property owner will tell y'all for the last, I don't know, Sam and Greg, how long it's been that this has been under discussion, but this needs to go through the process, but, you know, I think everyone needs to understand what's being talked about here is almost 1,000 residential units on the first phase, 209,000 units of single-family, and the difference with that is when legacy development was discussed, the significant portion with legacy development before that project could ever move forward was what was going to have to happen with T-Dot and all of the infrastructure improvements that we met with T-Dot for specifically with this property. So, I, I understand and I sympathize with, with the property owner, and I'm, I'm for if the process wants to go through, then let it, let it go through. But I do think that this Cherry Lane Corridor Study, if we don't get this right the first time, we are going to have some significant issues in that corridor, especially with what T-Dot's saying or not saying on the I-24 interchange that we don't think we're going to get and what that's going to do. I mean, Chris Griffiths said that the minute that, if, the current plan that we approve, the, the flyover and the intersection at Broad Street, it's immediately going to be an F-rated intersection after about fifteen to twenty years. So, I'm fine letting, I mean, I'm, I'm letting it go through the process. I will say, I've been very upfront with the engineer and the developer on what my opinion is of the project. But I, I think every property owner needs to be able to take their property through and go through the Planning Commission and then come to the council, so.
That's what I'm saying. Let it, let it get another round of hope.
Yeah.
Yeah. I, I, I do think we need to, to look at the infrastructure and things like that, whether that unit's passed or not. I totally agree. I just think that, I mean, if a guy spends a quarter of a million dollars on engineering work and then you pull the rug out from under him, I, I just don't think that's good business.
Well, I, I don't disagree. I just, I don't like the comment that the rug's being pulled out from up underneath them because I, I, maybe Darren, what would be great is if you could send something or have Sam and Greg send something to the entire council on when this property discussion started, and then the timeline, and then what's happened specifically almost the last nine or ten months. That, I think that would be great, just so everybody can sort of understand where we are on everything.
Sure, sure. If I, if I may, I think this area, from a transportation component, it really does need to stay in the study. But I think what we, what I hear the council saying is, it needs to be released though, as far as the development process, allow them to proceed in the development process. I just want to make sure you understand, there is a-
Can we do both?
We can do both. I think we can just do the interchange. We can do the interchange-
I think that's fair.
-across the river, and we do, we do have a transportation connectivity item that needs to be studied through the, through the property. But we'll just have, we'll just do that concurrently as they go through the process. I think they understand. I've seen some of the concept plans. I think they understand that is a connectivity that has to occur with the state, the I-eight-forty interchange back to Broad through this property. So we just need to make sure that as they go through that process, they understand that that corridor needs to be integrated into their, into their submittal.
And to be fair, I think that's the same discussions that you've had with, or that staff has had with the Dismuks family, with the Toon property, with the, the Waldron property. So this is not just this property. It is the property that's along the whole corridor. So I don't want the property owner to think anybody's picking on this piece of property. I mean, there, there has been some significant changes with T-Dot over the last three or four months that has impacted this whole corridor. And, and I think we've only got one option or one chance to get this right and fix the, the infrastructure in the area. So I think it is fair, though. I thought we were talking about pulling them completely out of the study, but if they can stay in the study and then-
Go through the process.
They can go through the process, and anything's going to have to be subject to whatever this study says, then I would say best of luck.
Well, what's the timeframe on the study? Will, will this study be able to be completed in a manner in which they can hopefully work together with the applicant? The study and the applicant can be congruent?
Right. The goal is to have this study done within nine months, and there has been discussion about-
You bill monthly or something? Damn.
There's been discussion on how to integrate the current development scenario into our vision of what happens. I think, you know, from our standpoint, obviously, we'll follow the direction of city leadership and staff, but as far as the planning side of it, we feel like we can consider what's been proposed and integrate it into our planning vision, if you will. So they can, they can happen concurrently in, in, in our minds, at least from the planning side. And there would not, you know, there again, we'll follow your direction, but we think there's a way to look at the entire corridor at the same time that we're considering what's being proposed in that development.
Okay. I mean, I'll, I'll share my thoughts. I was not at the workshop when this was discussed, and so when I returned back into town and I, and I saw it, I was, I was a little surprised because I think what you all keep referring to, the corridor, is that yellow line, right?
Yes.
At the corridor?
That's the future.
Some of these properties, particularly the one that we're talking about that's south of eight forty, and then even these other smaller properties that continue to be south of eight forty on like the southwestern part of the map, that is very far from the, like, very far from the corridor. So can you justify why this was even pulled in to the study area to begin with?
Well, it was, I think, the interchange at, at eight forty, at Interstate eight forty, knowing that that had to get back over the river through this property to Broad. So the corridor, I know that's, yes, the corridor was twenty-four to eight forty, but there's a lot of major thoroughfares that are going to have to be, again, integrated into that corridor and how they tie back to those interchanges. And one of those main, I don't know if that was an arterial collector road that's going to have to come straight through that Hoard Pocket, I'm calling the southeast pocket there at eight forty and Broad, it was just, it wasn't, it, we just knew that it was integral to tying back the Broad connection to the, to the eight forty interchange.
So Jamie, you see where, you see where D, Jamie, is on the?
Mm-hmm.
So that is the, the intersection that's going to be at Broad Street to be able to go back over to cross over Stones River to get back to eight forty, then to, to go through the Cherry Lane Extension. So, everything that happens on that four-hundred-and-seventy-six acres has got to go back that direction or the other direction.
Sam may be able to pencil it in from the, the interchange on eight forty back to Broad and kind of what we're looking at there.
We can, we can certainly do that. What I, what I did want to say is that maybe we chose a, a, a poor name for our study, the Cherry Lane Corridor, but really, this is, this is a transportation study, but it's also a land use study. And what we would say about those properties that are south of eight forty, the ones that, that, that you're asking about, they're pretty critical in influencing and setting the land use vision out there. How that corridor, or how those properties develop will influence other properties in that area. And so part of what we're looking for out of this study is to establish a vision for how, for what the community would like to see those develop. And, and so that's the reason we included those properties in the, especially the land use part of it. And the other thing we'd want to say about land use is land, land use influences transportation. Origins and destinations, trip generation, those are all integral to the transportation modeling process. And so you need, you need your land use plan or your recommendations of your land use plan to be able to influence and advise your transportation modeling. And there's a, a bit of an iterative process in there, and I think Mr. Gunther laid that out for you, how the two would interact. But, but the, the real reason we included those properties in the study area was for the land use component more so than the, than the transportation component. And I think Mr. Gore asked about the activity or the corridor here and, and what we were envisioning on this property here, and how that really, because it, those properties are so deep and they're bounded by some other things, we really need to see the integration of something in our transportation plan that allows us to, to bring traffic into and out of that property. It's, it's six hundred acres, give or take, the types of densities we're talking about there. It's possible that we can put a lot more density on that than we can support with our transportation network and our transportation infrastructure if we don't have a, a plan that, that allows us to build some additional connectivity in there. And, and I think here, Darren, you were asking or specifically saying, getting something back across the river and then also being able to, to tie that into Cherry Lane so that we, we create that, that network. And, and there's a, there's a, also a tremendous question about how these properties interact with Broad Street, the closeness they are, the, with their proximity to the Interstate interchange, how sensitive we know that area is to traffic operational issues. That's why we have Kimbley Horn on our team to help us get very detailed in the geometric design. Not just looking at the traffic volumes, but actually what the laneage might look like, what the geometry might look like, what the turning movements needed to be. Because we need, we, we get one shot to make this right, and we need it to be a good, sound, fifty-year decision. And I think the opportunity is, is for, i-if the council so chooses, we can start down the process of reviewing the development plan. That's, that's a five-month rezoning process. Today, that property is zoned commercial highway. The uses they proposed are mostly not permitted in commercial highway, and they've proposed a, a planned development approach. And so we, there would be some time to work through that. I think there's an opportunity for those two to influence each other as it makes its way through the process.
So Sam, has the developer submitted his plan yet to planning, to the staff yet?
We, we've only had discussions on their concept plan. They have not made an official submittal. And I, I think part of their, their thoughts today are, hey, at least let us get started in the process. But, but we, I, I think they're probably pretty well advanced on some, some of the development submittals and the plan booklet.
You, I understand you've had multiple pre-application meetings, right?
I think there were multiple interactions. They, the pre-application did start on a, on a project of this size, and with what they were asking, there's a lot of opportunities for us to iterate back and forth. And we talked about the land use character, the developers' thoughts and, and plans on that. We, we did see a couple iterations on that. Worked very well with their development team. They, they, they did bring in a land use planner with, with some good experience. And so I think, I think that the, the land use planner that they have on, on their team would, would work very well with our group, our study team as well.
Okay. Is there a motion then?
So, you're saying this takes five months to rezone, if that gets approved, and you're going to work confluently together. So, a-at the end of five months, if it was to get approved, do you, do they still need the four months of lag time for the study to get done? To, or, or is that five months of confluent working enough to work with that developer?
I guess that's what Planning Commission has to decide. I mean, I guess-
I'm not, I'm not, I'm, I'm-
No, I'd say, I guess Planning Commission will have to, you know, they might make their approval subject to, or they may choose to deny because the study hasn't been completed.
I'll make a motion that we approve the plan, but letting this project go through the process.
But staying in?
By staying in, yeah.
Yeah.
So your motion is to approve this, the property stays in, but the owner is allowed to proceed to sell, and the developer is allowed to pursue their plans that's going to come to planning.
That's right.
So I think, though, we need to get, so we need to amend, we need to amend this corridor study by saying that we're going to allow this property, but actually, I take that back. We need to propose, approve this corridor study because this has it in. And then right after this, you can make a motion that, that this property can be removed from the, the pause, development pause that we have, and then it can go through the process.
All right, so moved.
That would be the appropriate course.
All right, so moved.
Second. And then also, two, second. Let's make sure that they do their homework, making sure that they do a traffic study as well. I know we're going to do one on our end, but make sure that they're going to-
I think that's the tough thing right now with a traffic study, is that not knowing what's going to happen in, I hate to use this term, upstream, it's going to be tough to figure out exactly until we get that nailed down.
I want them to cover their, their bases, just like we're going to cover ours.
Yeah. All right, so we have a motion to approve the corridor study, and did we have a second?
I just made it.
All right, motion, a second. Please call the roll.
Ms. Saberwater?
Aye.
Ms. Gales Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Maxwell?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye. All right, and so now, would this be the, the one parcel, the hundred-and-forty-seven or hundred-and-fifty acres? Or are we wanting the entire four-hundred-and-seventy-six acres to be withdrawn? Or to be allowed to go through a process?
Yeah, so today, there are only two properties that are in their study plan that are currently inside the city.
Okay.
The other two properties, as I understand it, are not in their, in their plan, even though they may have a tentative contract interest in those. They're not part of the development plan at this point.
Okay, so, so can you identify which of those properties are for Sean's motion?
I'll, I'll go back to this map.
Okay.
Mayor, and I'll just say that property and that property are the two that are currently in the city and, and the two that they have, that I understand they have under contract. And then I would also add that, that we, we do have a couple of additional properties, several additional properties in this study area that, that we will possibly see development plans come forward, although they're not rezonings or annexations. And, and so we're, we do have Rivers Landing that's active under development, and we also have some property between Singer Road and Overall Creek. I think that's being developed by Mr. Haislett. And, and those properties will be, will be possibly bringing development plans in. They'll probably be in the site plan stage. I'm going to look, look at Mr. McKnight and get acknowledgement that it would be site plans rather than rezonings or annexations. And we would propose to, to, to manage those through the process as well. They're already entitled with their zoning.
Yeah, I think that's only fair. If they're already in the, yeah. So I make a motion that these two properties are allowed to go through the planning process and not be held in the moratorium.
Second.
And if we could include any site plans or development plans for properties that are currently entitled by zoning. Because I think that's the, the issue, that the question on annexation would have to be studied for most of these to be considered, but-
Would you amend your motion to that?
That's amended to what Sam said.
Second.
Make sure it's in the record to watch.
Those two, those two, not, are those two properties the entire four-hundred-and-seventy-six acres, or?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Just those two?
So just to clarify, it'd be for these two properties and then any property that's coming through that already is entitled, has an entitlement to zoning or already annexed in the city. Is that fair?
Yes.
Okay. All right, we have a motion. We have a second?
All right, motion, a second. Please call the roll.
Ms. Saberwater?
Aye.
Ms. Gales Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Maxwell?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye. All right, we'll move to item twenty-four, shared cause for repairs to firing range at the Rutherford County Sheriff's Office.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. For your consideration this evening, it is a request to approve funding for required repairs at the Rutherford County Sheriff's Office firing range. The current firing range was installed in two thousand and eight, and MPD since inception has been a partner with the Sheriff's Department regarding the use and maintenance of that facility. The block walls that border the sides of that facility are now deteriorating and need replacement. So right now, the range has been shut down because of safety concerns. The Sheriff's Department received competitive bids for installation of a new concrete sound barrier for a total cost of eight-hundred-and-ten-thousand-two-hundred-and-ninety-five dollars. And if approved, the city's share would be four-hundred-and-five-thousand-one-hundred-and-forty-seven dollars. Two-hundred-and-eight-thousand dollars of that repair would be funded by the FY twenty-five operating budget, and the remaining one-hundred-and-ninety-seven thousand would be funded from unforeseen. So, this time, I'd be glad to answer any questions you may have.
No questions, so moved.
Second.
Motion, a second. Please call the roll.
Ms. Saberwater?
Aye.
Ms. Gales Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Maxwell?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thanks, Chief. All right, we'll move to the City Judge Employment Agreement. Adam, are you presenting that?
It was presented for council, but I can present it.
Yeah, no, it's-
Move for approval.
I'm going to make a statement. I go to church with the person who potentially is going to get this, so I'm going to abstain.
Second.
Motion, a second. Please call the roll.
Ms. Saberwater?
Aye.
Ms. Gales Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Maxwell?
Abstain.
I'm sorry. Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye. Thank, thank you to everyone for their hard work on that. All right, let's move. We have no Board and Commission appointments. Any beer permits?
Yes, we have three regular beer permits, one for a new location for a grocery store, a market located at eight-ten Northwest Broad Street, suite two-eighteen. One located, one for a new location for a restaurant located at twenty-five-twelve Robbie Corlou Lane, and one ownership change for a restaurant located at seventeen-twenty Old Fort Parkway, suite C-one-seventy. We also have nine special event beer permits for Oakland's Association. All the applicants meet the requirements for issuing the beer permits, with the exception of pending building and codes permit, and building codes inspections for the regular beer permits and pending special event beer permits.
Second.
Motion, a second. Please call the roll.
Ms. Saberwater?
Aye.
Ms. Gales Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Maxwell?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye. Any statements that need to be paid?
Yes, sir.
All right, we have one item of other business, purchase of first-due software. Chief?
Good evening, Council, Mayor. I've come for you tonight to consider contract purchasing of first-due software. Our department is required to, to document and download all information from our cardiac monitors A and D plus, AED plus all of our fire reports, soft reports that we report each year, as required by state law. Currently, we're with the Zoll Software Company, and as of December thirty-first of this year, two thousand and twenty-five, they are doing away with that software that we currently have. After researching and product demonstrations, working with Kathy and the legal department, we have- have determined that our best fit for our department needs will be the, the first due software. Also, this software will offer some other things that we could also use in our department that we were looking at purchasing, eventually anyway, that's inventory software, staffing software. Total cost of this is $139,850, and it's due the state contract bid. Our staff would recommend approval, please.
So moved.
Motion?
Second.
Second. Please call the roll.
Ms. Everwater?
Aye.
Ms. Gales Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Maxwell?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye.
Any other business from staff?
Thank you.
Any other business from council?
Just wanted to make a comment real quick. I don't know if y'all saw the county commission meeting last night, the special called one, but I found it very interesting that the commission voted 16 to 5 to support Ms. Barrett's resolution from the solid waste, folks. I think that's very encouraging that the county commission, you know, supported that. And, you know, second, I'll just make a comment, you know, I watched the, I guess you could call it a debate on Monday between the county mayor and Republic Services, and, you know, the comment was made by the gentleman from Republic Services in regards to, you know, they should be working together and working in harm's sake and trying to find a way forward, and I would just hope that, that is truly the spirit of what he said, you know, because we have some major decisions as a city as well as a county upon us. And lastly, I've got a gift for Madeline Scales, so you'll have to put this on your disclosure, Madeline, okay? But it's a book about African-Americans in Rutherford County that I found and bought. It's an older book, but it mentions the Scales family, and I want to say, your father's sister is in here, there's a picture of her, and I'm sure you know a host of folks in here. There's a Preston Scales, and it lists also Wilma Scales. So I just wanted you to have that. I found it, and wanted you to have a copy of that. Thank you for all you've done.
Appreciate it. I'll cherish it. Thank you.
I'm not gonna autograph it, but, you know. Thank you, Madeline, for all you've done for our city.
I think Ms. Barrett has requested that-
Yes.
I can't remember the date.
April 10th. It's the, yeah, we're not having a council meeting next week, I think spring break, Rutherford County Schools' spring break is next week. We will have our workshop April 10th, and Ms. Barrett has asked to come and present that resolution to the city council. I don't know that it would be, if we would, it would be appropriate for us to vote on it, maybe she would just like to present it to us.
I think we can, I mean, I think if we put it on a, a published agenda, we can, we vote on that, we vote on action items at the workshop, right?
You can.
Yeah, that's fine, I didn't, she, that may be your case, she wants to present it and ask you to vote on it again.
Great.
It basically limits, it limits trash coming to Middle Point-
Right.
-out, outside of the region, the region being Rutherford, Cannon Coffee, and Warren County. So it would, in effect, prohibit any Metro Davidson County trash coming to Middle Point.
Well, asking TDEC-
To enforce, right.
To enforce it.
The current-
Us passing the resolution isn't going to just stop it, I just want to make that clear.
Exactly, correct.
So will it be the same resolution or similar to the one county passed last night?
I believe so, yes.
And I want to just comment on that, because it was said last night, Jamie, you just reminded me, is that the legislature is probably gonna be in effect until the 22nd, so it's probably important that we do this.
Yes, soon.
Soon.
In fact, she even mentioned probably sooner, because committees have already called for a last calendar, actually, they called for a last calendar like two weeks ago, so.
Well, I think, you know, the overall goal of the, I think of the resolution was that the Central Tennessee Solid Waste Board passed a flow control measure back-
Twenty-three months, almost a year, two years ago.
At, at that time, the gentleman who was at TDEC sent a, a letter basically saying that they have the authority, but at the, at that time, TDEC did not think that was the appropriate route to go, and so what she's asking is the local, the local jurisdictions to, you know, pass a resolution that says that we support that. And I think Austin brought up some good points, and it's easy to talk about, you know, it's all about nuance on what information's put out there, and I had asked Darren to work on something for all the council members that we will have to be able to present to our constituents to show, here's the timeline of what, you know, going all the way back to the Solid Waste Action Committee that Kurt served on, that I served on back in 2014, that we can really go through the timeline and talk about, here are the things, you know, because I, I get frustrated when individuals with Republic tout city taxes going up, and they tout that, you know, solid waste fees are gonna be out the roof, and they use-
No more free trash.
Yeah, and, you know, when you look at the free trash, Darren is getting this data, you know, there's 89,000 tons of trash in Rutherford County that is, this was based on some past numbers, that's truly free trash. So there's a lot of people in Rutherford County who don't get free trash and don't use waste management as their, or, excuse me, Republic Service is their pickup. So to say that their fees are gonna go up when they don't even take trash to Middle Point, it's really disingenuous. So I also would, I, I listened to the, the, the town hall that Republic hosted and have been able to research the landfill in Charlotte, North Carolina that they've referenced as a pristine landfill, so I would recommend everyone to, to research some of that data as well. There's a lot of good stuff out there, so. I, lastly, want to say this, we were awarded, the, the airport was awarded $4 million in the governor's supplemental budget, and that $4 million is for the runway protection zone in acquiring some of the property or property that the city has already acquired and spent money for. That's still gonna go through the legislature, but I wanted to say thank you to Senator White, Senator Reeves, Representative Baum, Rudd, Terry, Stevens, and Sparks. That's something that we've all been working on the last year, and they really saw the need of, of what that is for the residents and, and approved that. So just want to say thank you publicly to our delegation for, for helping the city of Murfreesboro.
And just to add to that, there's only three airports, so that's a testimony to their effectiveness to be able to get that for this city, just three in the state of Tennessee that was able to get this. Great job.
So thank you very much, and thank you to the governor for helping Murfreesboro with that.
I'm sure he's watching this meeting right now.
I'm absolutely, he probably is right now. All right, any other business? So we'll have groundbreaking tomorrow, 10 o'clock, Veterans Park Site. We will not have council meeting next Thursday. Darren will not be here next week, so we'll make sure that we post your location and phone number of where you're gonna be, so residents can contact you for anything they need while you're, you're out of town, so.
Council on the 10th.
Council on the 10th.
Workshop.
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 Not on the 3rd.
Okay.
And that will mean, folks, we will have to do, public comment will either be, will be on the 17th is when our, our public comment will be. All right?
All right.
Seeing no other business, we'll stand adjourned.